This is the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, October twenty second, twenty twenty five. To all persons interested in or affected by the actions of the zoning board of appeals, you are hereby notified pursuant to section eleven of chapter forty eight of the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And all amendments thereto that a public hearing will be held today, Wednesday, October twenty second, twenty twenty five via Zoom. So our appeals public hearing is being held by this remote participation method, public access to the meeting shall be provided in the following manner. The sub- the meeting will be televised live via Xfinity, channel eighteen, or high definition, channel one zero seven two. It may also be accessed via the government access channel livestream on the town of Barnstable's website. Which is HTTPS colon slash slash barnstable dot cablecast dot TV slash internet channel slash watch dash now. Real time access to the zoning board of appeals meeting is available by utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID provided. Public comment can be addressed to the zoning board of appeals by utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID. The Zoom link is HTTPS colon slash slash town of barnstable dash US dot zoom dot US slash J slash eight seven one three two five six one six four two. Or calling eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine and entering the meeting ID eight seven one three two five six one six four two. Applicants, representatives, and individuals required or entitled to appear before the zoning board of appeals may appear remotely. And may participate through accessing the LinkedIn telephone number. Documentary exhibits and or visual presentations should be submitted in advance of the meeting to anna dot brigham at town dot barnstable dot MA dot US. So they may be displayed for remote public access. Copies of the applications are available for review by calling five oh eight eight six two four six eight two. Or again emailing anna dot brigham at town dot barnstable dot MA dot US. I will call the meeting to order with the introduction of board members, Herb Bodensee.
Present.
Paul Pennard.
Present.
Aaron Webb.
Present.
Larry Hurwitz.
Present.
Manny Alves.
Present.
And Natalie Pittinger is absent, and I am Jacob Dewey as chair. Notice recording this meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being recorded and broadcast on the town of Barnstable's government access channel in accordance with MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty. I must require whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, please make their presence known. Seeing none, our first order of business was minutes. We had minutes from August twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, and September tenth, twenty twenty five. They don't have any comments or concerns on either of those? Someone want to make a motion to approve?
Uh, this is, well, I was, uh, I abstained from September tenth because I was at.
Okay, so we can, um.
I would move to approve.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to approve the August twenty seventh, twenty twenty five minutes. Roll, uh, ninety second?
Second.
I'll second.
Roll, call, vote. Herb Bodensee.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Manny Alves.
I abstained. I was not present at that meeting.
All right, and I'm also in favor. And then, um, I'll make a motion to approve the September tenth, twenty twenty five, um, meeting minutes. Any a second?
I'll second.
All right, roll, call, vote on the twenties, uh, September tenth meeting minutes. Uh, Herb Bodensee.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pennard.
I abstained.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Manny Alves.
I abstained.
And I am in favor. Uh, so minutes are approved. Uh, that moves us to old business. All right, so this is going back to appeal number twenty twenty four dash zero three nine. Twenty five Falmouth Road LLC has filed an appeal of administrative officials' decisions in accordance with MGL chapter forty A, section seven, eight, and fifteen, and section two forty dash eighty eight of the Barnstable zoning ordinance. The appellant is appealing the decision of the building commissioner in issuing building permit BLDC twenty two dash two two seven, which is dated September seventeenth, twenty twenty four. The permit was initially denied pending the receipt of a narrative to explain the expansion of the mechanical base on the property. Appellant's position is that the permit fails to take into account evidence and documentation from the town records and files which conflict with the determination to issue the building permit. The subject property is located at ninety five Falmouth Road, Hyannis, Mass., shown on assessor's map three one one as parcel zero seven three. It's located in the highway business HB and the residence B RV zoning district. This was continued from November thirteenth, twenty twenty four, January eighth, twenty twenty five, February twelfth, twenty twenty five, and April ninth, twenty twenty five, and no members have been assigned. We were waiting for, um, response from legal. I'm standing here. Um. Anna, do you know where we're going with this? Should I assign members or?
I, I believe that attorney Ford wants to go forward, so I would assign members.
Okay, so I will assign our regular members, myself, Herb, Paul, Aaron. And Manny, do you want to sit on this?
Sure.
All right, and Manny. All right, attorney Ford, and I don't know if attorney Kenny's here for this as well, but I'll hand over to attorney Ford first.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board. Um, as you indicated at the outset, uh, this was continued, um, numerous times. Uh, because, uh, the parties had, along with the board, made a request of the, uh, legal department to opine on the issue of standing. Um, we did at the long last receive a, a memo, at least pertaining to, uh, the building permit, uh, appeal. Uh, but I assume it, it applies to both cases I have here this evening. Um, and, uh, the conclusion of the legal memo from the town attorney's office is that the, um, the appellant, my client's twenty five Falmouth Road LLC. Um, they're not having standing and that the case needs to be dismissed for lack of jurisdiction. Um, I take issue with the opinion from the standpoint that it concludes that the appellant hasn't provided, um, uh, any evidence. Uh, in support of their claim for standing, and, um, uh. There hasn't been a hearing yet. Um, the hearing wasn't even opened. So we haven't had an opportunity other than to write a letter after, uh, attorney Kenny wrote a letter, uh, regarding standing. Uh, that we knew the, uh, the town attorney's office would, would look at. But in that letter, I specifically reserved the right to, uh, present evidence at a hearing regarding that issue and regarding the case. So, uh, from the outset, my, my position is that I would like to have a hearing. I would like to present, uh, the case. And, uh, and then have the board, um, uh, hear from attorney Kenny or anyone else who is here, uh, to speak to the issue. And then, um, make a decision both on the issue of standing and, uh, if you decide to, make a decision on the merits. But it seems to me that we have to have an evidentiary proceeding. I'm not sure my brother agrees with me on that, and so you may want to, uh, allow attorney Kenny to address that at this point too. But that's, that's your decision, Mr. Chairman, as to how you want to proceed.
I mean, I, I, yeah, I mean, you've, you've made an application of an appeal to, you, so you're entitled to, um, you know, present your case. So I think we can go forward. Um, I mean, I, I guess the, so you have a response to what you feel the, uh, town attorney's position was?
Yeah, I think the town attorney's position, uh, that they, they stated the law correctly, uh, but I don't think they necessarily applied it, uh, correctly here because we hadn't had a hearing yet. Uh, they wrote the memo as if there had been a hearing and we had an opportunity to, to present, um, the evidence. Because their conclusion was that the applicant has failed to present any credible evidence in support of, uh, a particularized injury. See, I'm quoting now, to a protected property or legal interest. And so I, I assume what they were doing was simply looking at the four corners of our letter. Uh, which we wrote to the board back in February of twenty five, uh, regarding the issue of standings. Uh, but in that letter, we specifically, um. Uh, reserving the right to submit, uh, additional evidence beyond simply this letter at any hearing conducted by the board. So that's why I thought that, uh, the board should still. Like, could mean to proceed.
I guess two concerns I have. One is that the building commissioner is not here because we are appealing his decision, and the town attorney who had this opinion is not here. But I'll ask my other board members how they feel they want to proceed.
Well.
Manny, go ahead.
Well, he, I agree with you that you disagree with the opinion of counsel. But you're asking us to ignore the opinion of counsel. I'm not sure how we can proceed. The, the, the issue of standing is primary. If, if, if town council is telling us, you don't have standing, we cannot hold a hearing. I, I guess I'd like you to address that.
Sure, uh, yeah, yeah, um, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, good question. Um. Uh, town council's opinion is, uh, based upon, uh, the premise that we've had a hearing, I believe. Because they conclude in their conclusion that we failed to present any credible, credible evidence to support, um. A particularized harm to get to the issue of standing. So I don't, I don't disagree with the way counsel has described what the law of standing is. I just disagree with their conclusion that, um. You can't, you can't make a finding in a legal memo on a premise that we haven't presented any evidence when the hearing has not opened. To allow anyone to present any evidence. At a minimum, the hearing should be opened, um. Attorneys can, uh, both of, of, of my, uh, appeals should be allowed in. And, uh, all of the attachments to each appeal should be allowed in the record. Uh, the letters to the town attorney should be allowed in the record. The town attorney's response should be allowed in the record. And, uh, otherwise, the board has nothing to make any findings on, um, without holding a public hearing. And I, I agree with the chairman's conclusion that he thinks that we're entitled to a public hearing, so.
Yeah, I'm on for Anna.
And, and so I'm not sure the premise on which the town attorney made that conclusion. And, and that would be my response, Mr. Alves.
You continue to.
Yeah, I, I.
David, your mic.
Hey, David.
I can print you a copy if.
David, your mic is on. Hey, David. Hey, David.
January.
Hey, David. Anyone?
That you're.
David? David, your mic is on. Okay, he's quiet now.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I can't find the, the button to raise my hand, but I, I, if I may be heard.
Yeah, that's, go ahead.
Uh, I don't think there, uh, Mr. Ford and his clients are entitled to a full hearing. I, I think as, uh, Mr. Alves stated. Uh, the jurisdiction is a prerequisite to them proceeding. And I think, I don't think the town attorney's office made a determination as though a prior hearing had been held and, and then reached this conclusion. They reached a conclusion of what we agreed to submit to the town attorney's office to establish, to establish or not establish the agreed party status of, of the appellant. So if we're going to proceed, and I think they, I think attorney Ford has a right to proceed on a jurisdictional matter only. And if you then determine that, uh, his client isn't a free party. Then they have the right to go, go forward and put the balance of their case in, and we'll put our response in. But I think is a prerequisite, it, their, their status, their jurisdictional status has been challenged, and they need to respond to that.
Okay, I mean. I, this is town attorney or director Cuffler was here to sort of give us some guidance here because I'm not really sure. Anna, I mean, what, what do you advise that we do here going forward?
Oh, it's, I, I don't think I can advise you. I'm happy to text, um, Mr. Cuffler and see if he's available, but, um, he might not be.
Okay, Aaron, chairman?
Yeah, I, again, I think this is, um, um, a matter between attorney Ford, his clients, and the town attorney's office. Uh, before we proceed at this point, um, it's given what, you know, Mr. Alves indicated, uh, not taking sides per se one way or the other at this point. But again, there seems to be, um, the disagreement, um, in the, in the process between, uh, attorney Ford and his clients and the town attorney's office. That I don't believe this board is capable of, of this, you know, sort of figuring out at this point, so, um. Attorney Ford, is there, is that, is there a way? Is there, does that make sense that you would take this up with them first and come back to us if you get a response? Agreeable or, I'm not, again, I don't know. This is legal. I'm not sure. This has been going on for a long time. I'm not sure that, uh, uh, it is something that, um. Uh, I, I'd look for a written response. It, it might make sense if the town attorney could join the board. And, uh, and, and provide guidance, uh, to the board, um, regarding this question as to whether we proceed with the hearing or not. I, I, I agree with you.
Yeah, the time, yeah. And I certainly appreciate that response, but again, knowing, you know, from the screen here, who's here and who's not, um. I don't believe, you know, at this point, that this board can go further without that guidance from the town attorney's office. So to, for the matter and sake of time, can we make a motion to continue this one last time? I mean, I, I don't know what to do here, but I, I can't. I mean, I just, me, me figuring this out isn't, you know, I don't, I don't really know what to, yeah, I don't, I, I don't know that we can make that determination.
Anna, if we, we have a new a- attorney now, a new town attorney?
Yes, we do. I, I believe she starts on Friday.
So I guess, I mean, I don't want to like overwhelm her the minute she walks in the door, but, um, got to start somewhere, I guess. Um, so maybe we task her with trying to come back to, I don't know how much time we would need to sort of provide her to. You know, attorney Ford, was there a response? Did you make a response back to her memo? I don't think I saw any response, written response.
No, no, I didn't. No, I didn't. I, I, I didn't make any response to that last memo. So that came from Allison Cogniano, Assistant Town Attorney. And I don't know if she's still there or, um, she's the one who, who would address this, um. But I, I certainly don't, I, I certainly don't have any objections. In fact, it, it might make sense for the board to have counsel at the hearing a- a- as we proceed. Um, and, and, and it may be that, uh, uh, the board should have that in order to, to conduct the hearing. If that's what the town attorney's office recommends.
So we, we should continue this to December tenth? Anna, does that seem reasonable? And then we request that, you know, that the town attorney and maybe director Cuffner both be available for that. And, and maybe in the meantime, the town attorney can also reach out to, um, attorney Ford, and they can have a continuing discussion on, on standing?
Yeah, I, I would want, I would want attorney Kenny to be involved in any discussions I have, and I would make sure that he is. Hey, come on.
So board members, are we agreeable to that, to make that? So I'll make a motion.
I second their motion.
I didn't make a motion yet. I know, I'm going to make a motion to continue. I was looking for the appeal number, uh, twenty twenty four dash zero three nine to December tenth, twenty twenty five.
I, I, I suggest we make it for the companion case as well.
Yeah, we will, but I think I have to read that into the record still.
I'll do that.
Open it. Um, so we'll do a roll call vote on, on twenty twenty four dash zero three nine. Herb Bodensee.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Manny Alves.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor, so that one is continued with members assigned. And then appeal number twenty twenty four dash zero four zero twenty five Falmouth Road LLC has a, has filed an appeal and administrative official's decision in accordance with MGL chapter forty eight, section seven, eight, fifteen. And section two forty dash eighty eight of the Barnstable zoning ordinance. The appellant is appealing the decision of the building commissioner in a letter dated September fourth, twenty twenty four. The appellant believes that the determination fails to take into account evidence and documentation from the town records and files which conflict with the determination and do not address the concerns raised. As set forth in the appellant's enforcement letters and correspondence. The subject property is located at ninety five Falmouth Road and one twenty three Falmouth Road, Hyannis, Mass., shown on assessor's map. Three eleven parcel zero seven three and zero seven eight lots are located in the highway business HB and residence B RV zoning district. This was continued November thirteenth, twenty twenty four, January eighth, twenty twenty five, February twelfth, twenty twenty five, and April ninth, twenty twenty five, and no members were assigned. And, um, the hearing was not open, so we'll just leave it that way, and we'll just continue it. Um, I'll make a motion to continue this. Appeal number twenty twenty four dash zero four zero to.
Mr. Chairman, you don't want to assign members?
We, we can, sure. If you want me to. All right, so I'll assign, I'll assign the same members, Herb Bodensee, Paul Pennard, Aaron Webb, Manny Alves, and myself. And I will, um, make a motion to continue twenty twenty four dash zero four zero to December tenth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
Roll, call, vote. Herb Bodensee.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
Favor.
Manny Alves. Manny, are you muted?
Sorry.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. So attorney Ford, attorney Kenny, that is continued. And Anna will try to work with getting the new town attorney up to speed, maybe if, if this does get passed to her. I don't know how that's going to go.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Chairman, can your, uh, staff, or maybe Anna, reach out to Brian Florence as well since it's an appeal and ask him to be present that night?
I will.
I agree.
Thank you.
All right, so moving along to appeal number twenty twenty five dash zero two six. One hundred three Long Beach Road LLC has applied for a special permit pursuant to two forty dash one thirty one four D two Craigville Beach. District use regulations in section two forty dash one thirty one seven E Long Beach Short Beach. The applicant is seeking to demolish and rebuild a pre-existing non-conforming garage. The proposed proposal will decrease the non-conforming side yard setback from the existing one point one to propose six feet. And will increase the gross floor area from twenty eight thirty one square feet to propose three thousand twenty eight square feet, an increase of six point seven percent. The subject property is located at one oh three Long Beach Road, Centerville, Mass., shown on assessor's map two oh five as parcel zero one seven. It's located in the Craigville Beach District CBD and Long Beach Short Beach LBSB Neighborhood Overlay Zoning District. This was continued from September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. We have members assigned, myself, Herb Bodensee, uh, Paul Pennard, Aaron Webb, and Manny Alves. Um.
Mr. Chairman, before you, I'd like to state that I live diagonally across from this property. I live on Short Beach Road. Um, so I'm not a voting member, but I may have some comments. I would just like it known that I'm across from this house.
I, I mean, it's your decision if you want to recuse yourself, but if, if you are stating that you're recusing yourself, you would have to, you know, go dark. You can come speak in public comment as member of the public, I believe, but, um, if you're sustaining a conflict, then you need to recuse yourself, even if you're not a voting member.
Yeah, no, but I'm, I'm saying I don't have a conflict. I'm just making it known that I live diagonally across, and if that's a problem, you can tell me, and I, and I will recuse myself. I don't see it as a problem.
I can't make determinations for the state ethics board. That's between you and the state ethics board to make that determination.
So you would, so you would prefer that I recuse myself, is that?
That is your determination of how you want to handle it. I can't make that determination for you.
Okay, then, uh.
We've all done our ethics, our, our ethics training, so that's up to you.
Well, to avoid any conflict, I'll refuse myself.
Okay, you just have to mute yourself and go dark on the screen. Aaron, go, did you have a comment, Aaron? Um, all right. I mi- I believe it was Mr. Bas- Basinski, but you were the one handling this going forward?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, for the record, Zach Basinski, professional engineer. Uh, here with me this evening is John Fenny as well, uh, to speak to the matter. Um, as we remember, um, the meeting was continued so that we could have the building inspector weigh in on some determinations regarding the word elevation in the bylaw. So a letter was submitted to his office. He issued a memo back to you. Um, I believe that has been s- sent around to the board. Um, as we had mentioned at the last hearing, the word elevation was in reference to the flood zone elevations and not the elevation of the structures with it. So we don't believe we are impacting or hurting the floodwater elevations with the reconstruction of the garage and modifications to the house. The other ca- um, item that came up at the hearing was the view corridors. So we went back through the zoning bylaw, and it's our interpretation that the view corridors, based on. Two here.
Two forty one thirty one point five footnote four.
Mr. Ken, Mr. Kenny, I'll let you step in on that one if you'd like.
Certainly. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Appeals attorney, John Kenny. I watched your hearing on, uh, September twenty fourth, uh, and as you sometimes mull in, I've now Kennyed in. I very much enjoyed watching the spirited discussion about the view corridor and also, uh, the perplexed looks on everybody's face trying to interpret the, uh, DCPC regulations. I could feel your pain. Every time I go in here, I'm like, on page one, I think it says I can do it. Page two says no. Page three says maybe, and then you get to the final answer. Uh, in this matter, there was a question as to whether the view corridor applied to homes like across the other side of the Centerville River and looking over the top of the structure. But when you read, uh, the, the section to maintain or enhance views to the Antucket Sound. And on the Centerville River where apple go in accordance with two forty one thirty one point five note four, and you go to note four. That says in the Long Beach Short Beach neighborhood, to preserve and enhance views of the Craigville, Craigville Beach, the Centerville River. A view corridor shall be preserved using twenty feet of either side setback. Or yet, or when side yard setbacks are less than twenty feet, the greater of either side yard setback existing on November sixth, two thousand and nine. The view corridor shall remain free of, uh, view obstructing buildings, structures, site improvements, or landscaping other than low growing plant material. Or existing natural vegetation, the entire depth of the property from the street to the river or beach. I think that makes it very clear that the view corridor is from the street to either the beach or the river along the, uh, side yard setbacks of the property. And we are enhancing, uh, the view corridor because we're moving the garage. I think it's approximately five feet over and out of that side yard setback. So we're improving that side yard setback, so I would submit to you we meet that requirement.
All righty, um, thank you. Back to, does the board, do any board members have questions for the applicant, attorney Kenny?
Yeah, this is Paul, Mr. Turtle.
Go ahead.
Attorney Kenny, you're, so your position is two forty dash one thirty one dash five. Note, uh, uh, that five does not apply to height. It retard, it, in terms of the view corridor, it applies to the side elements of this.
I think we're mixing two things. The, 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 the maintain or enhance views to the Antucket Sound, you know, the Centerville risen re- uh, river. And you have to go to two forty one, it directs you to two forty one thirty one point five note four. And it talks about a view corridor from, from the street, uh, to either the river or the beach. And it clearly states it's a, a, along the, uh, s- side yards of the, of the property. Doesn't really have anything to do with the height. The height of the building doesn't come into play. That's not within, it, it, it's not within the view corridor. Because it's, it's either the twenty foot setback is required by zoning on that that existed in two thousand and nine. And so here we're improving it because what existed in two thousand and nine had a garage. We're moving that over five feet to improve that view corridor. And so here we're improving it, cause what existed in two thousand and nine had a garage, we're moving that over five feet to improve that view corridor. I don't know if that answers your question, the height came into, uh, the interpretation of, uh, section eight uh, regarding, um, do not increase south facing building surfaces so as to limit the adverse effect of increasing elevation of velocity floodwaters.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members?
Yeah, if I may, um. A question, um, the documents you submit, submitted indicated that the property is subject to a temporary conditional variance for the continued use of a failed cesspool issued by the health department, now I understand that you're maintaining the same number of bedrooms. But has this been reviewed in in your, you're basically adding an ADU and and eliminating one bedroom. Given the change in use, has this been reviewed by the health department?
We've had a limited conversation with them, um, right now they, we're going through this, if it's approved through the ZBA, we'll be back in front of them to update the variance with them.
Alright, so that that that, okay.
But it would have to be two se- are there two cesspools in series, or there's, you guys are gonna put in a compartmentalized tank?
No, we're alright, we're gonna just, we're gonna change the onsite building sewer, maintain what's there today. There's a prohibition on updating the septic system until the sewer comes by. So we were granted a variance previously, uh, to do some internal renovations on the existing structure and maintain the existing, um, septic onsite until the sewer comes through, they don't want us to put in a septic system in cause they want us to hook to the sewer as soon as it comes by the property.
But we wouldn't be able to put in an ADU, the state said the guidelines, we have to have either tanks in series or a compartmentalized tank, not subject to variance.
Yeah, no, we, the variance is is to maintain the existing onsite septic, so we're not increasing flow, we're actually removing a bedroom from the main house to put it into the ADU, so it's staying the same number of bedrooms on the property.
But it doesn't, it's not about the bedrooms, it's creating an ADU, makes our apartment.
Yeah, but from the environmental standpoint that the health department reviews, it's the flow and the the intensity.
An ADU is being treated like a duplex, you have to have two tanks or a compartmentalized tank.
Yep, then we're asking. Yeah, if it was to be serviced, but if it was to be serviced by an onsite septic system. The issue with this this property is is that there's a sewer system, there's a moratorium for prevent putting in updated septic systems in this area because they want you to hook to the sewer system.
So you you, your answer is following this board's deci- it just seems backwards. Following this board's decision, you will be before the Board of Health?
Correct.
Uh, usually, the reverse is the case. We were sort of at the end of the process, but, okay. I think your point, Jake, is what I was gonna get to is, you know, this is an ADU, there are specific requirements, but the 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 other factor here is the introduction of sewer and and not requiring them to build something that will need to be, uh, 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 will be, uh, absolute, I guess, once sewer is in place, or at least cause them to spend money twice. Uh, connecting to the store as well, anyway, alright, so you will be, this is subject to approval by the Board of Health.
Correct.
Okay, can I have one more question, i- it's in your application, but the in the modifications to this house, the residential unit itself, that's not why you're before us, right, it's just the movement of the garage, is that correct?
It's the garage and then the gross floor areas, so we're not increasing the intensity of it.
Right, you're staying with far below the twenty five percent of the.
Twenty five percent, correct.
Alright.
Well, uh, um, Mr. Chairman, um, Manny, to follow up, um. I thought this includes approval of renovations to the existing structure. Um, and according to the prints, the only renovation I can see is elimination of a deck. Am I correct in both counts?
There's the removal of the deck and then the, um, conversion, can share the screen here?
Okay, David, ask you.
Yeah, Danny, David's permission.
David, can you give permission, or Anna?
David has to come from David.
David, are you still there? David?
What's up, Jake?
Uh, can you, um, to give, um, Mr. Basinski a.
Yes.
Use.
Please, sir, yeah, no problem.
I'll say.
Thank you. So we're adding a second floor above the existing first floor area in the back of the house, and then it's the removal of the existing deck and then the living space above the screen porch area through the back of the property on the back of the house. So we're taking a bedroom out, modifying the internal floor areas of this. Build it, we're moving the existing deck to the back, and then building the screen porch with the second floor living space above that.
Okay, so there's, uh, uh, there's no increase in the first floor area of the main residence, is that correct?
Stay, correct, yeah, the footprint of thing is internal to the existing structure, it's the second floor living space and everything above it.
Okay, the other question I have is the height of the primary residence will be increased or to stay the same?
Will stay the same.
Okay, thank you.
So, one quick, uh, question since you showed us that picture, oops, you took it away, but it says that one of the cesspools is to be removed. The shower cesspool, you see that, like, on the sideline?
Yep, you showed it again.
Is that even before you go to the Board of Health, in other words, you you're reducing the number of cesspools on the property?
This here, we're connecting it all to, through this, through the, this is the primary cesspool. It's on the property right now, there's a little overflow one here that serves as the outside, outdoor shower.
Okay.
Through that.
But that one's being removed.
That's being taken out right now, cause we're gonna have a dry well that's gonna be reinstalled with this as part of the work. We're just concerned that if this gets damaged during construction if the project's approv- approved.
Well, yeah, I know we're getting getting a little ahead of ourselves here, but would would you object if this was made subject to approval by the Board of Health?
It has to be, I mean, it is.
Has to be.
Uh, okay, well, it, it, I I'm hung up on the number of bedrooms remaining the same, right? Which you made a point of, I get, um, so ordinarily, that's what the health, the Board of Health would look to, but if, as the chairman pointed out, the addition of ADU changes the rules a bit. Like, we're kind of in no man's land, okay. We all agree that this will be reviewed by the Board of Health, okay? No more questions, sorry.
Yeah, and I guess the other question, back to Paul's point, are we, are you asking for any relief? It it's just the the floor area that's being asked for for relief in sub- in respect to the main house?
Correct, just the floor area for the main house, and then just to alter the pre-existing non-conforming structures, yep.
Structure, specifically just the, are you saying that the main house is pre-existing non-conforming? No.
Cause we're asking for the, we're asking for the addition up to the twenty five, so we're asking for the six point seven on the lot.
Okay, but we're not approving any modification to a pre-existing non-conforming of the main house? Just, the pre-existing non-conforming is the the ADU garage?
The ADU garage on that and then to alter the existing structure, let me just check one thing here. Yeah, that cause it meets all the setbacks, it's the coverage, it's the extra lot coverage on the lot.
Because of the ADU, not because of the.
Not because of you.
In the other house.
Because of the ADU.
Okay. Just wanna make sure we're doing that, any other board members have questions?
I'm gonna beat this dead horse here. But i- 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 the the rats say as long, as long as you don't exceed twenty five percent of the gross flo- floor area, you don't need relief. So why are you saying that is a subject for?
Cause we're we're altering the, we're altering the garage structure with it, so we're asking for that, that the six point seven be included in the decision. That it's meeting the twenty five percent, so it's not a relief from that, we're asking for the six point seven, we're under the twenty five percent for the structure. And they're asking for the special permit to alter the garages, the garage building.
So to go full circle, the alterations to the main house are not su- they're not.
They're not subject.
They're not before this board.
Correct.
But we are being asked weirdly to sign off, I see you're saying, Manny, that we are signing off with some alterations for some reason, which I don't think should be in there.
Right. It it it, it's below the lim- the limit is twenty five, you're saying it's only six point seven percent increase on the gross floor area, so that is not a specific request for approval. You're within the limit.
Uh huh.
I'm getting that right, okay.
Yeah, I, my point was, we're we're not approving anything with respect to the primary residence.
That's how I'm reading it too, Paul.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's how it should be, but I'm not sure that's exactly how it's written, the way that the the decision is written, our staff report.
Right. So I think, I I think we can condition it, um, gently?
Yes, I mean, we can.
Okay.
You want, um, alright, anymore before I, public comment is still open on this matter, is there anyone here to speak to this, oh, sorry, go ahead, Aaron?
It's good, no, I may, I I understand what we're saying, but we are somewhat making the determination on the ADU based upon their removal of a bedroom from the main house. So, again, just to conv- just to convolute it even further, I mean, there is, there is a, you know, connection there somewhere, but.
But that's on a Board of Health regulation, not on a zoning, from what I can tell, that's not on a zoning regulation, because they're not like removing gross floor area in the house to make, to to hit a number, I don't think.
Yeah, you're right.
I think it's just based on septic capacity.
That's it, then that's what I thought, yeah, okay, I'm gonna, that was good, you know, anyway.
Um, is there anyone from the public that wanted to speak to this, just raise your hand or speak up? Seeing none, Anna, do we receive anything on this? Don't think, there's nothing in the file, I don't think.
No, we did none.
Okay. Um, so I'll make a motion to close public comment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote on closing public comment, Herb Bodsey.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Manny Alves.
You favor.
And I'm also in favor, so public comment's closed. Um, the public hearing is still open, do we have any more discussion, do you guys wanna close the public hearing and make findings?
And we'll get a close public hearing.
Alright, I'll second that, closing the public hearing, Herb Bodsey.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
Favor.
Manny Alves.
You favor.
And I'm also in favor, public hearing's closed, no more testimony, back to the board to make findings, does someone wanna make findings on this?
I'll do it.
Go ahead, Manny.
Okay. This is in connection with special permit application number twenty twenty five dash zero two six. Uh, one hundred three Long Beach Road LLC has applied for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash one thirty one point four D two Craigville Beach District Use Regulations and section two forty dash one thirty one point seven E Long Beach Short Beach. Applicant is seeking to demolish and rebuild a pre-existing non-conforming garage. The proposed alteration will decrease the non-conformity and non-conforming side yard setback from the existing one point one foot to the proposed six foot six feet and will increase the gross floor area from two eight three seven square feet to proposed three zero two eight square feet an increase of six point seven percent. Based on the evidence presented, I find that the application falls within the category specifically accepted for the in the ordinance for a grant of a special permit, specifically section two forty dash one thirty one point four D two A and two forty dash one thirty one point four E allow for demolishing and rebuilding of lots of existing structures in this zoning district. Uh, pursuant to a special permit issued by the board. Uh, after the evaluation of the evidence presented, I find that the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. Uh, and I think there's some specific findings the board needs to make pursuant to section two forty dash one thirty one point four. Mainly, that the proposed alteration, uh, or expansion is not substantially more detrimental to the environment, community, or historic character of the neighborhood than the existing building or structure. Uh, I find that by increasing removing the non-conformity or improving the non-conformity, uh, uh, in in moving the garage uh, five foot in towards the property, this is not substantially more detrimental to the environment or the community or historic character. Um, let's see. Uh, I also find that the proposed alteration contributes to and respects the character of historic development patterns of the area and minimizes inconsistent development and redevelopment impacts to the historic and community character resources in this area. He, what else are we trying to find, and I do so find that this protects and preserves scenic views historic scenic views and vistas ways to the water. And also find that it protects and preserves natural, im- improves natural resources, including but not limited to the barrier beach and groundwater and coastal water quality and minimizes development and redevelopment impacts to the natural resources and ecosystems in this district. Um. I find that the, as explained, it's now explained in the letter from the building commissioner. The proposed alteration preserves the natural flood control characteristics and the flood control function of the flood path, path plane and protects human life and property from hazards of periodic finding flooding and preserves and deans the groundwater table and water recharge areas within the flood plain. Um.
And we're gonna defer to the Board of Health in regards to
Yeah.
No detriment to the, um, whatever groundwater and coastal resources?
Good point, yeah, I I I I guess, subject to review and approval by the Board of Health, um, um, following the action by this board. Uh, lastly, I find that the development complies with the setbacks and lot coverage requirements and is seen character of surrounding structures, particularly structures that predate it. And that the redevelopment complies with the height limitations in the ordinances, those are my findings.
Alright, do I have a second on Manny's findings?
I'll second that.
Alright, roll call vote on Manny's findings, Herb Bodsey.
Favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
Um. In favor, sorry.
Manny Alves.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor, um, so I'll make a motion to grant special permit twenty twenty five dash zero two six based on the.
Should we go over the conditions?
Yeah, this is our due process. So I'm making a motion to grant special permit number twenty twenty five dash zero two six based on the findings with conditions to follow, so I need a second.
Separate vote, yep. I'll second that.
Alright, so roll call vote on approving the special permit, subject to conditions to follow, Herb Bodsey.
Favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Manny Alves.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor, so the special permit is granted, subject to conditions, Manny, do you have the conditions?
Yeah, um, I, Mr. Basinski, I'm sorry for butchering your name. The conditions are numbered one through five in the staff report dated September eleventh, twenty twenty five, have you had a chance to review them?
We have.
And, uh, they're acceptable.
They are acceptable, yep.
And I I know we mentioned this during the findings, but I I I would suggest we amend these conditions to say that the board's decision remains or or the the basically proceeding with this application and 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 and, uh, construction is s- subject to review and approval by the Board of Health. There?
Yeah, I mean, do we think we need to say that it's not, seeing our regulations, they're saying that it can't be more detrimental, that it's no more detrimental than current conditions? That the Board of Health finds it's no more detrimental to current. That the Board of Health finds it's no more detrimental to current conditions?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Um, so I need a, so we have the, you proposed those conditions, I need a second on the conditions.
You know, this is Paul's second.
And a roll call vote on the conditions. Herb Bodenseeck.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Manny House.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. So um, Mr. Bissinski and Attorney Kenny, you have your uh special permit.
Thank you all very much, thank you very much.
Thank you for the time to get the clarification and thank you to Commissioner, uh, Billy Commissioner Florence for helping us through that. Popped in and bugged him twice on it to get a, get him to put a memo together for us. Just wanted that covered.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Um, alright, so moving along, we have appeal number twenty twenty-five dash zero two-four. Egan Capital LLC has petitioned for a variance pursuant to section two forty dash thirteen E bulk regulations for the R C District in section two forty dash twenty-six F bulk regulations in the H O District. The petitioner seeks to separate off a triangle port, triangular portion of the eighteen thousand four hundred and fourteen square feet at the rear of the property to utilize in connection with a neighboring affordable housing redevelopment project. Remaining property will total thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and five square feet. Existing single-family dwelling and shed will remain on the portion of the land with sole access from Richardson Road. Substantive property is located at forty Richardson Road, Centerville, Mass, as shown on Assessor's Map, two one, two one zero as parcel one three four dash zero zero three. It is located in the residence C R C and Highway Office, H O Zoning District and the resident uh Resource Protection Overlay District, R P O D. This was continued um from October eighth twenty twenty-five with myself, Herb Bodenseeck, Paul Pennard, Aaron Webb and Natalie Pittinger sitting on the matter. Um, we did request, uh, now he's not here. I did, we did receive written requests from Attorney Singer to withdraw this matter. Anna, tell me if I'm doing anything wrong procedurally. Should we just? We don't need to have anyone mulling in to just withdraw?
No, just withdraw and and take a vote.
And we don't need to close public comment or anything, we can just withdraw it?
Withdraw it.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to accept Attorney Singer's request and um withdraw appeal number twenty twenty-five dash zero two-four without prejudice. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Second.
Roll call vote on the withdraw. Herb Bodenseeck.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In.
Um.
Favor.
All, and I'm also in favor. I think that was everyone sitting on it that's present. Alright, so that is um withdrawn. That moves us to appeal number twenty twenty-five dash zero two-five. Great Marsh Development LLC has applied for a comprehensive permit pursuant to M G L Chapter forty B, Section twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three and seven, six, zero, C M R, three zero dot zero zero and thirty-one dot zero zero. The applicant proposes to develop an affordable housing community on five point eight acres. The homes at Centerville Cove will consist of nineteen detached three-bedroom, single-family homes. The residents at Centerville Cove will consist of thirty-six rental units in one building with a mix of two and three-bedroom apartments. The subject property is located at thirty-nine, fifty-one, sixty-one, and seventy-five Great Marsh Road and one ninety-five Finney's Lane, Centerville, Mass, as shown on Assessor's Map, two-ten, as parcels one-two-four, one-two-five, one-two-six, one-three-one dash zero zero-three, and one-three-four dash zero zero-four, and map two-zero-nine as parcel zero-two-zero respectively. They are located in the residence C R C and Highway Office, H O Zoning Districts and the Resource Protection Overlay District, R P O D. This is continued from October eighth twenty twenty-five. Um, we did not have any members assigned. We did not open the hearing. No testimony was taken. Um, we did receive receipt of a written request of Attorney Singer Singer. Um, as we sort of discussed at the last meeting, to continue this to January fourteenth twenty twenty-six, which would be in person. Um, does anyone have any problems with that? Are we agreeable to do that? I don't know. Anna, do you know if they're ever going to make modifications? If we do, do they need to re- notice abutters or we're staying within the same legal notice?
Well, so far we're staying within the same legal notice.
Okay. If that was to change, it would have to be re- noticed?
E, m- most likely.
Okay. Um, and it would become a different appeal at that point?
Yeah, I assume so, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Alright, so if no one has any problems, I'll make a motion to continue this to January fourteenth twenty twenty-six. That's seven oh one.
Mister Chairman?
Yep.
Point of order, Bill Freel, sixty Richardson Road.
Yep.
Um, is it possible that uh some form of notice goes to the abutters list? Is there a way to reach out? Um, because I know that there's been some confusion as to what was going to be occurring tonight on this matter and what date into the future this was going to be continued until. So it may not be required, but it it may be helpful to the neighborhood should that notice be reissued.
Yeah, I mean, eh, you can always reach out to Anna um via email or calling to get updates and then everything is published in the public folder. You know, like the letter from Attorney Singer, once we received it last week, we put it in the folder, you know, stating that this was going to be continued. So anything should be in there. Um.
The website is up to date.
Yeah, Anna's been, Anna's been very responsive. Thank you for that.
Yeah, just keep it on that folder and check in with Anna prior, but nothing could happen between now and that fourteenth date. And if it's going to be continued, usually within forty-eight hours before then, there would be a letter in the folder saying, or a copy of the email saying that they wanted to continue it or something of that nature. Then they would be required to mail you guys anything additional. Um, alright, do I have a second on continuing? Alright, roll call vote on continuing. And again, we do not have members assigned. Um, roll call vote, Herb Bodenseeck.
Favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb. Aaron, you asleep?
I'm in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I went.
I'm in favor.
You're on Europe time still.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Uh, you're good. Uh, Manny House.
You favor.
And I'm also in favor. So that is continued to our in-person meeting in January. Um, alright, moving to new business. Appeal number twenty twenty-five dash zero two-nine, Jack and Dale Lipart have applied for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash ninety-two B alteration, expansion of non-conforming buildings or structure used as single and two-family residents. The applicant seek to lift and reposition the existing three-bedroom, single-family dwelling and construct a one and a half story addition on top of the existing dwelling. The renovated and expanded dwelling would be constructed on piles and consist of two and a half stories, five bedrooms across five thousand four hundred and seventy-three square feet of gross floor area. The subject property is located at fifty-one Hawes Ave, and is massed as shown on Assessor's Map, three-two-three as parcel zero zero five. It's located in the Residence B, R V Zoning District. Um, so sitting on this would be our regular members. Myself, her, Paul, Aaron, and Larry, do you want to sign on this?
Yes, I'll sign on this.
Alright, um, so I'll make a motion to open the public hearing on the matter. I need a second.
Second.
Roll call vote on opening the public hearing. Herb Bodenseeck.
Favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. So the public hearing is open. Attorney Nickerson, I think this is you, right? Or is Attorney Kenny running on this?
Yes, it is. Um, but Attorney Kenny's here to get me out of any real trouble if I get into it. Uh, good evening, Mister Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Patrick Nickerson. I'm an attorney at the law office of John W. Kenny, proudly here tonight representing Jack and Dale Lipart. Who, as you correctly stated, Mister Chairman, are seeking a, seeking a special permit pursuant, pursuant to section two forty ninety-two B. Expansion or alteration of a non-conforming, single or two-family dwelling. Like any request for special permit, um, the first question is whether or not we're dealing with a legal pre-existing, non-conforming dwelling used as a single-family residence. Uh, after reviewing the memo, you can conclude that yes, we are dealing with a structure of this nature. Uh, it was constructed in nineteen forty pursuant to Assessor's records, which predate bulk regulations in the town of Parcible. Uh, in nineteen fifty-six, zoning was changed, rendering the three of the four setbacks non-conforming. Those would be the two fronts setbacks and the side yard setback. Side yard setback being seven point two feet, one front yard setback on Hawes Avenue being seven point two feet. The second front setback being seventeen point six feet, where twenty feet is required. Side yard setback requirement was increased to ten feet. Um, Mister Chairman, you correctly stated the proposal, which is to raise, reposition, and recon- uh construct the dwelling with an expansion going upwards in the form of an addition. Um, the, you correctly stated the proposed square footage. And the proposal, if approved, would achieve a net improvement to all setbacks, including those three non-conforming setbacks. There is a net improvement total of five point four feet. Um, seven point two feet of the side yard setback being increased to ten point four. Seven point two front yard setback being increased to twelve point oh. Rear setback being improved, it's currently twenty point eight, being increased to twenty-five point seven. And there is a proposed increase in non-conformity of the front yard setback on Witten Avenue. It's presently at seventeen point six. The proposal calls for fifteen feet, which is okay. Uh, provided the board finds that the proposed expansions and alterations are not uh substantially more detrimental than the existing dwelling. Uh, as a result, I submit that in its entirety, the proposal is less non-conforming than what presently exists, given the approved setbacks as described. The proposal has improved aesthetics, would better fit the Liparts' family's needs, hands enjoyment of the property, slightly reduced lot coverage, which will show on the site plan, keeping with changes in the evolving neighborhood regarding the flood plain requirements and current building code requirements. Uh, the um improvements to the dwelling and the improvements to the front setback are similar with neighboring properties. The curved roof shown in the elevation plans is, is inspired by adjacent property. And the proposed front setback is also inspired by the abutting property to the west. Um, that, Mister Chairman, that is a summary of the proposal. Happy to share my screen and take us through the site plan as well as the elevation plans. Uh, the design team is here, the engineers here from Atlantic Design, Roy Catagnani is here, maybe with an associate. And collectively, we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Are there any board members with questions for the applicant?
Well, I would certainly take Attorney Nickerson's um willingness to share his screen and and take us through the site plan and elevations.
Sure.
If David could do that.
Yeah, David, can you uh unlock Attorney Nickerson to share his screen?
I'll tell.
Okay. Uh, okay, so at first we'll start with the uh site plan. I presume, Brendan, are you here?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, great. Um, so could you just zoom in a little bit? Could you take the board through the existing conditions shown and then through the proposed conditions?
Sure. Uh, the player that I have right now is the existing conditions. Um, as discussed, it's a one-story dwelling, um, and uh with a seashell driveway, uh, of wooden deck and uh landscaping. I think including hardscape, which is the uh seashell walkway. Um, the rest of the, the yard is uh is lawn and um and then um just a fence that runs around the uh, the uh western side of property and a picket fence along the uh, the front property line. Um, the utilities are shown on the eastern side, connected sewer. Um, has uh overhead wires that you may be able to see on the eastern uh corner of the property or the building I said, and is also connected to natural gas.
Okay.
Do you have, can you just, is Witten, so Witten's a public way that continues down or it's a way to water or?
Uh, so Mister Chairman, it is a public way up to the southerly uh street line of Hawes Avenue. In our memo, we submitted a document on record from the Registry of Deeds demonstrating that it's a private way basically from below where my mouse is located. I can pull up that plan if, now if you like, or we can wait until.
We can wait, I, I, yeah, I just want to, just with that less conform, less conform, whatever, more non-conforming. I just want to make sure we cover that and just make sure we sort of.
Yeah, correct. Uh, it is a private way um from this point downward to the water.
Correct.
Okay, uh Brendan, can you take us through?
Alright, alright, Brendan.
Yeah, problem. Brendan, can you take us through the proposed conditions?
Yeah, yeah. Um, so the uh, the whole uh building as maybe uh designated by the squares along the perimeter will be on file. Um, each of those squares represents a pile location. Um, the box, you can see the, the two cars, um, the aerial image of vehicles that will be uh the garage underneath, um, that the owner will park in. And then the uh square that's uh directly above uh the second car that is an empty way that has a stairwell and um an elevator that will, you know, bring them to the first floor. Um, the garage is enclosed, but uh with kind of a lattice or slat. Um, um, piece of wood uh was facing in it for, um, that adheres to the flood plain requirements. Um, the seashell driveway will more or less uh stay the same, it's quite changed in the size of it just to match up with the broad entrance. Um, and same thing with the walkway, that will more or less stay in landscape. And again, um, there'd be minor revisions to that just to match the, the front building. Um, but not any major changes there as well. That they intend to um maintain as much of the landscaping as possible. Um, as far as the rest of the property concerned, will remain lawn. There's no major patio or hardscape um being proposed at farthest. Um, and the uh, the utility will remain the same. Um, it's still connected to sewer, overhead wire, um, natural gas. And essentially entering the building will be roughly the same area that they were entering the existing building as well.
Okay, um, with that, um, we could move on to the elevations, Mister Chairman, if you like, or?
Yes, that would be great. Unless anyone has any questions specific to this, if any board members have questions, speak up because I can't see you all. Alright, hearing none yet, let's go on to um elevations.
Okay. Okay, Roy, uh, take us away with sheet A one point one.
Good evening, Roy Catagnani for Concert Group, we're the builder, uh, proposed builder for this project. You'll see uh the existing, on this sheet, you'll see the floor plans. The basically, the um first level you see uh on the left is the um, first is the uh upper floor, I guess. And then the one in the middle, the building uh outlined in the middle is the lower level, the lower level being the one above the garage. So uh when Brendan spoke about garage, it's really an open air garage, right? Uh, s- separated uh from the outside by slats, but there's air spaces between the slats. So the only thing that's really occurring on the third side, which is the third slide on the right, would be the access to the ground. So um down there would be a uh with breakaway walls, a stairwell, and the, and the bottom of an elevator shaft, small closet. Uh, so that's enclosed, but it's got breakaway walls because it's in the flood plain. The, then moving to the next level up, lower level is the bedroom level. Uh, you can see the darker shadowing in that plan. It represents the footprint of the existing home. And you can see the proposed lighter colored areas are the new area of construction. The top floor or the upper floor is, is living space, uh, the master bedroom adjacent to uh the dining area, living room, and kitchen. Square footages are shown in that plan. Um, the elevation views are somewhat traditional in nature. Uh, as was mentioned earlier, this curved roof design uh much to the liking of the owners and that is represented also on the street. and that is represented also on the street with a much older dwelling. The attic level shown in the upper right is to be unoccupied. It's accessible only with a drop-down stair. Possibly up there would be simply just an insulation, you know, vacant space, ceiling of the floor below. You can see the slats, as mentioned, the two overhead doors to access the area for cars. And then you can see the entrance canopy there, which is the entrance to the scare tower, if you would call it that, including the stairway and the elevator. Traditional exterior materials, traditional windows, I think very much in keeping with the neighborhood. A little bit of boasting, I think it's one of the nicer looking houses that will end up on this street. Any questions? This gives you the elevation, elevation, shows the floodplain. A little hard to read at this scale, but it shows you the elevation that we have to raise the house up to. We're in a velocity zone, so we have to raise it up to, again, eyes being what they are, I can't, I think it's fourteen is the floodplain elevation, so all destruction must be above that. Any other questions?
Can you just give us the measurement, existing top of roof line to proposed top of roof line?
I think, I think we calculated that earlier, Patrick, do you have that handy?
Yes, I can pull that up. This was in the form of an email. Give me one second, please.
One of our architects saw it, the email, so I think it was sent to you.
Just one moment.
I thought we could find it.
I have it here, it's an email that's indicates the existing house to the ridge as measured from average grade is seventeen foot, eleven inch. The proposed house ridge height is forty-nine feet, zero inch above the average grade.
Okay.
And if I may, how does that height compare to properties in the neighborhood?
I don't, I don't know if others want to comment on that. I think there is a property diagonally across from Hawes Avenue on the right, on the corner of Witten, and Hawes very similar.
We have some pictures of the neighborhood, Mr. Alves, that were submitted with our memorandum. Exhibits A and Bs to the house, and we scroll down and get those for you. So this is, though it's shown as thirty-one Hawes Ave, this is actually thirty-two Hawes Ave, which underwent a similar renovation pursuant to two forty ninety-two B. I know every application needs to stand on its own merits, but this exists. This is shown on the Google map here as September twenty twenty-four. There's an additional picture later of the materials. Two doors down at sixty-five Hawes Ave, this was, I believe, utilized as a buy right, demolition rebuild. No special permit was sought, but you can see the increase in height with the additional story height, a couple doors down. Exhibit H, these are some pictures that are taken by yours truly the morning of this past Thursday, showing, attempting to show relative heights of buildings in the neighborhood. I submit to you that the tip of my mouse point is the chimney of the subject property. Behind it is sixty-five Hawes Ave, you can see the roof peak here, clearly at a much higher elevation. And then I submit at even higher elevation than both structures is thirty-two Hawes Ave owned by the Bichetti family. Additional pictures, attempts to show, show a couple properties behind thirty-two Hawes Ave. We have sort of a portico type structure. I submit the majority of the houses in the area are two stories, if not more. This has a better look at thirty-two Hawes Avenue along with the houses behind it. Here's an updated photo of the sixty-five Hawes Avenue photo from the Google map rendering. It shows a very tall staircase leading up to the house. Our proposal has a staircase to the side with the stairs enclosed, so you don't see sort of a big tall staircase right outside property. Excuse me, this is, this is the private way of Witten Avenue. Mr. Chairman, you had asked whether it was public or private. I submitted the time I took this picture, my toes were basically on the pavement and separating the pavement and the seashell, looking at the water views enjoyed really by virtue of the private way. As you step back, you can see the landscaping and the house on the other side of Hawes Avenue now. Already disrupt any potential views? And then as you back up further, I'm now at the top of Witten Avenue, the public way. I submit that any enjoyment of the water view is really enjoyed by virtue of the private way, which of course cannot be developed and must remain. And that already, given the relative grades of upwards on Witten Avenue in relative comparison to the grades of the subject property, there's no disruption to any water views that one might encounter based on my viewpoint, again, standing on the uppermost side of Witten Avenue, the public way. And then finally, Mr. Chairman, this is a documented reference earlier submitted as exhibit I. Related to a sewer easement, the property is subject to sewer and it differentiates between the town road of Witten Avenue to the north, where I was standing for various photos, and the private way, which is seashell drive.
So properties on both sides have, have benefits to that way, on both sides of that, of the private portion?
So the fee in the way, I would submit, is owned by the relative owners of the property. As far as rights of use and enjoyment, I did receive a legal memo from the Liparts, which left an open question of whether there were access rights. Well, I'll just say left open the question of access rights for, for persons to access the so-called promenade shown on the eighteen ninety-six plan. Wasn't, wasn't definitive. To my knowledge, there's no legal decision on that issue. To the extent the benefit exists, it would be applicable to owners of the, of the properties within the subdivision plan, but that, that issue is not yet been determined.
Okay. And then just, can you just clarify, why is it fifty-one A and B? Are those condo, are we condoized there or?
No, they are not. I frankly am not sure why, they are separate properties, they are separately assessed. See if I can get you a picture of both of them. The property of fifty-one A is also owned by the Liparts. They have not merged because developed lots do not merge. They are simply two single-family dwellings. I'm not sure. I'm not sure I have a good picture of the fifty-one A.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. And then utilities, it looks like there's an overhead wire crossing over fifty-one A, or sorry, crossing, that's serving fifty-one A, crossing over fifty-one B. Is that gonna go away or go underground or something of that nature? Is that just gonna remain sort of hanging there?
See, my client's nodding yes that it would. Brendan?
Based on the first plan that we had, the overhead wire would remain. So, yeah, as you see.
The one that goes right through the fifty-five there on the plan is one I was referencing too? To serve fifty-one.
Yeah, here is fifty-one A in the back, also owned by the Liparts. Jack, are you able to speak to this overhead wire? Please unmute yourself, thank you very much. I'm sorry, Jack, you have to unmute your mic. It's, you understand.
Lower right corner, click on the little microphone. Okay, great. Good evening. So yes, the utility wires will go underground. That is part of our plan for both homes.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Any other board members with questions for the applicant? No, none? I'll open the public, for public comment. We did receive two letters, one from a Debbie and Michael Bichetti at thirty-two Hawes, that's the higher building over there, they were in support of the project. And then there was one from William Q. Orb at thirty-one Hawes, and they were also in support of the project. Lots of nice things to say. So anyone here that wants to speak to this, just unmute yourself and state your name and address. Don't think there is anyone. All right, Anna, anything else we received?
Just what's in?
The folder?
The folder, yep, those two letters.
All right, I can make a motion to close public comment, I need a second. Roll call vote and closing public comment, comment, her vote seek?
In favor.
Paul Bernard?
In favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
And Larry Hurwitz?
In favor.
And I'm also in favor, so public comment's closed. The public hearing's still open. Do you guys have any more questions or things you want to cover before we close the public hearing?
Is that directed at us, Mr. Chairman?
Well, I mean, there was no public comment for you to respond to, but if there's anything else you'd like to add? Feel free.
Just wanted to make sure.
And Mr. Lipart, if you want to add anything, feel free. All right. Board members, anything you want to know, questions? No? All right, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, I need a second. Roll call vote and closing the public hearing, her vote seek?
In favor.
Paul Bernard?
In favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz?
In favor.
And I'm also in favor, so that brings it back to the board for deliberations. It is kind of crazy that it's gonna be thirty feet higher than what's there, but none of the neighbors seem to be upset about that. It will definitely, it's the way we're going, I think, with flood restrictions. And that area of town is being built into the sky, so it will definitely stand out as some of the newer ones do over there, but again, it's, it's, I think it's sort of what this provision allows for. Does anyone want to make findings or have any other thoughts? Aaron, Larry?
I, I don't have any thoughts, I mean, it's, you know, it looks like a beautiful home, so I'm impressed with what they've come up with thus far and I wish them well. I will certainly make findings if nobody else wants to volunteer.
Yep, we just have to, I don't know, maybe close the public hearing, yep, you want to go ahead?
What a guy.
That'd be awesome.
Thanks, Paul. Give me a minute, I gotta get my act together here. All right, meeting materials, give me for one second. Okay, boom, 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 are we here? All right, I'm getting there, I promise. Please give me a second. Yes, every point, okay. So, while it loads. My computer's moving very slowly, unfortunately, I apologize. Look like a little chemical.
I can reshare, I mean, that's helpful, I've got it right here.
Well, I, yep, for some reason I'm just getting a bunch of boxes on my laser fish.
Laser fish thing, it's really annoying.
Hey, David, did I share my screen?
Whatever you choose to do, that would be great, if you wouldn't mind it, Attorney Nickerson, I would appreciate that. I just need the staff report so I can reference the?
There it is. I'd ask Jack and Dale also to take a look at findings and conditions again. I know I sent this about a week or so ago, but just want to make sure everything's all right with you. Is this okay for here, Mr.?
Yeah, I think so, I need to get, if you could raise it up to the top of the sheet now so I can reference the appeal number. All right, here we go.
Okay.
So this is appeal number two forty dash ninety-two. I'm sorry, two, wait, special permit number two oh five dash two oh nine, Lipart. So Jack and Dale Lipart have applied for special permit pursuant to section two forty dash ninety-two P, alteration or expansion of nonconforming buildings or structures. All right? Moving around is not helping. Structures uses a single and two family residences. The applicant seeks to lift and reposition the existing three-bedroom, single-family dwelling and construct a one and a half story addition on top of the existing dwelling. Renovated and expanded dwelling would be constructed on piles that consist of two and a half stories, five bedrooms, across five thousand four hundred and seventy-three square feet of gross floor area. Subject property is located at fifty-one Hawes Avenue, Iannis, Mass. Is shown on the Sessors Map, three twenty-three, is parcel oh oh five. It is located in the Residence B, RB Zoning District. All right, Attorney Nickerson, if you could scroll down. To, perfect, yep, that's special permit findings for all.
Sorry.
Thank you, for all special permits, the board is required to make general findings pursuant to chapter two forty dash one twenty-five C. The board will review the evidence presented by the applicant, staff and members of the public, and after weighing such evidence, is encouraged to articulate if and how the evidence contributes to each and required finding. To my finding, the application falls within those categories specifically accepted in the ordinance for a grant of special permit to section two forty dash ninety-two P, allows for this special permit to be granted by this board. After evaluation of all the evidence presented, the proposal fills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. I think Attorney Nickerson has made a great job in presenting evidence that not only the neighborhood, Google Maps and photos that he himself took, but certainly show that this will be fitting with the characteristics of what is currently happening along Hawes Avenue and the area as well. So certainly not going to affect the public good and also allow the view from the private way of Witten, from the public access way. The site has, site plan has been reviewed and found approvable in accordance with article nine herein, subject only to the issuance of special permit. Site plan view is obviously not required for a single-family dwellings. Further, section two forty dash ninety-two P requires board to find that the proposed addition, alteration or expansion will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing building or structure. Again, it is significantly, you know, raising the height substantially, but we do have two letters of public support from neighbors. And again, proof is shown to us by Attorney Nickerson with the houses nearby. So in due to the foot plan, it's, that's what's required. Those are my findings.
All right, do I second for Aaron's findings?
I'll second that.
All right, roll call vote on the findings, her vote seek?
In favor.
Paul Bernard?
In favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz?
I'm in favor.
And I am also in favor, so the findings passed. I'll make a motion to grant the special permit, number twenty twenty-five dash zero two nine, based on those findings with conditions to follow. I need a second to grant the special permit. All right, roll call vote on approving, her vote seek?
In favor.
Paul Bernard?
In favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So Aaron, if you want to propose conditions?
I will, yep. We have Attorney Nickerson, we have conditions numbered one through five. I'm assuming you and your clients have had a chance to review those? And if so, are they agreeable to you?
Mr. Webb, I've reviewed them and I've set them to the Liparts. Just wanted to give them another opportunity to review the sort of five standard conditions that I see associated with special permits in town. That the site development be constructed in substantial conformance with the plan submitted from Atlantic Design engineers. That the proposed alteration of the structure shall represent full buildout of the lot. No further changes shall be permitted without approval of the board. Mechanical associated, equipment associated with the dwelling be screened from neighboring homes and the public right of way. And then I'm to record the decision, Liparts, to the County Registry of Deeds. Jack and Dale, could you give me a thumbs up if those are all acceptable or?
We accept them, thank you.
We accept them, thank you.
All conformed.
All right, thank you. I'll stop sharing now.
Thank you.
I don't think we need to put it in there, but I, I just want to add that one of the things that got me was substantially better for the neighborhood was just the power line servicing those two houses going underground is definitely good for everyone. Uh, but I don't think we need to condition it. Um, all right, so we have conditions proposed, I need a second.
Second.
And then we're voting on the conditions, Herb O'Donnell?
In favor.
Paul Bernard?
In favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Um, so you have your special permit. Thank you, guys, good luck with the build.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, have a great evening.
Hey, hey. And kudos to Aaron.
There you go, Aaron, nice job.
From that living.
Uh, all right, correspondence, we had a Cape Cod Commission agenda for October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five that we received. I thought there was one other thing in the folder, maybe, I thought, maybe not. Wasn't there one other thing in correspondence in here?
There was a preliminary subdivision notification transmitted.
Yep. What was the address for that? I can't load it, it's doing the box thing.
One forty-five Parks Road, Mayans.
Okay. Um, any matters not reasonably anticipated? Anyone, anything?
I'm sorry, do we, when do we talk or discuss or, or vote upon a schedule, or is the schedule just a schedule? I know Jenna did supplies with a draft, and do we have to approve it, or is it just, that's what we're doing?
I think, Anna, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was up to me to just approve it, is that, I think that's the way our board bylaws are written, but obviously open to any discussion if there's anything we want to change. That fourteenth, we put in-person.
Mm-hmm.
And then the first meeting, all the months after that, the first meeting, the month in-person.
Yes.
Pretty much copies exactly what we did the last year, twenty-two meetings. Um, so?
Didn't look any different, again, I didn't know if there was a, a moment that we all lay in on it, but, um?
Um, I mean, they'll all hit the calendar pretty soon, right, Anna, because right now, like, there's none of our meetings on the calendar in Jan, like, on the town calendar in January yet.
Yeah, I, I believe it's gonna happen soon, Jenna might know specifics, but, um, it should happen soon.
It's, uh, or they're on the backend calendar, so whenever the webmaster, uh, gets that ready to go, but should be soon.
Okay.
Okay, well, Martini's waiting, let's move on here.
All right, so upcoming hearings, we have the November twelfth remote, December tenth remote, January fourteenth, the in-person one, right now we have the, uh, the forty-B project on, um, and December tenth, we've got that phone thread one. Um, anything else? I'll make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote on adjournment, Herb O'Donnell?
In favor.
Paul Bernard?
In favor.
Aaron Webb?
I'm in favor.
Larry Hurwitz?
In favor.
Manny Alves?
In favor.
And I'm also in favor, so we are all set, David.